Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for indication and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Our fourth in heaven, once again, we assemble ourselves in the seat of government of Cartersville, Georgia. We ask that for your guidance, your wisdom, and your direction as we make the best decision for our citizens in Cartersville. Come down and be in the midst of this meeting and direct our path. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Drake, roll, please.
Carrie Hides, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Ross, Ward 3. Calvin Cooney, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5. Catherine, Ward 6.
Thank you, Julia. Our best to Councilman Roth, who let us know well in advance of tonight that he had other plans. He's with his daughter, taking her off at college. I know a lot of things, a lot of people have been doing that lately, but appreciate him letting us know well in advance about this evening. Our first order of business is to approve our council meeting minutes from August 3rd and the special called meeting minutes from August 9th. Council, yes, Julia?
If I could, please, Mayor, Council, but you know that you, I have also placed in front of you the minutes from this morning's meeting. Was it this morning?
Yes.
Yes, it was this morning.
Do I need to add that to the agenda?
It would have to be added if you...
Chairman, I need to add a motion to add nine items to the agenda. Can I get that? I've got a motion, a second. All in favor to Kate, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Or did you vote for that, or are you opposed to adding?
No, I, I can't wait.
Okay, good. That's all right. I heard everybody gasp out there when I said nine. One of those items that we added is the minutes from our August 16th meeting from this mor- or what is today's day? The 17th, excuse me.
Seventeenth at 8:00 a.m.
The 8:00 a.m. meeting from this morning. So now, Council, and again, Ms. Drake has presented these minutes to us earlier as well. So you have now before you the opportunity to approve or edit the August 3rd meeting, the August 9th meeting, and the August 17th 8:00 a.m. meeting. And now would be the time to make any edits to that, or if there are no edits to be made, a motion to approve would be in order. Motion to approve all three.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye.
Aye.
And all three of those items are added, or excuse me, they're approved unanimously. We will start with our public hearing, number one. We have a series of those tonight, and they'll be handled in individual order. And bear with us as we work our way through this. The first is the setting of the public hearing for the city of Cartersville M&amp;O milage rate set at 2.910 mils for 2023. Mr. Logan, do you have any? I guess I've just presented.
You just presented and asked if anybody wishes to have comments on it?
Thank you. I will, I will actually refer ahead of this public hearing, I guess kind of start things off, to if you would point your attention to the screen right there where Logan has some lovely graphics for us, a milage rate comparison for the city of Cartersville. There's other communities that we are frequently asked to be like. Those are their milage rates, or some cities that we're compared to. If you'll go to the next slide. And this, again, my point in this is that each year, if a city takes in a dollar more of revenue, we have to call that a tax increase, even if the pie gets bigger. That is because the state of Georgia tells us that we have to do that. The state of Georgia also, in their infinite wisdom, allows or requires us to put out and notice in the newspaper that says that we are increasing taxes. Well, I would kindly disagree with that and may disagree with some of the folks here that had to talk about it, but we'll talk about that together. This simply points out that the state of revenue, since state of Georgia, the percentage of revenue that they have grown over these several years, they don't have to call that a tax increase when they take, in this case, an additional 23% between the years 2021 and 2022. I know it is not an exact apples-to-apples comparison, but it's about as close as you're going to get between state and local government. Next slide, please. There's a breakdown of property taxes in our community if you live in the city. And those two on the left are what we are talking about in this first public hearing. Logan, if you'll please move on to the next one. This is a chart that shows the overall milage rate historically. And I'll point you to the top line where it shows that in 2019, the city had 3.0...
2.59.
Thank you, 3.259. And from there, from 2020 through this year, it is at 2.90. There is a recreation bond that the voters approved eight years ago now, and that goes down incrementally as the bonds are close to being paid off. And this year, it went from .624 down to .4. If you'll go to the next slide, please. So that's it?
That's all.
Never mind. Let me keep it right there. But anyway, those are just some talking points. I want to open up the public hearing relative to the city of Cartersville M&amp;O. And again, at 2.91 mils. And anybody wishing to step forward to speak on this topic may do so right now. When you do step forward, I would like you to give your name and your address for our clerk. And if you know what ward you live in, that would be helpful as well, so.
Hello, I'm Dr. David McCalip. I am a business owner at 15 Bowen's Court here in Cartersville. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Bartow Republican Party. And we ask that you roll back the milage rate. We notice, as we see, there's a 2.91 milage rate here. It doesn't matter if it still raises people's taxes. And your votes tonight are raising people's taxes. There's been talk in the newspaper about intellectual honesty. Well, it's intellectually honest to say that the actions you take when you vote yes to keep the milage rate the same based on higher property values raises the amount of money you take in through taxes to the government. That's a tax hike. Any citizen knows that, and they're not going to be dissuaded from that just because we don't like that the state law requires you to be honest and report that you're raising their taxes. Now, when you look at the reason it's going up, it's because of the high home values. And we all recognize that's an issue, and there may be steps you can take. I hope you'll support steps to slow that down in the future by making a 3% be the most that you can increase home values. But today, you can...
Sorry, just to interrupt you, but we have zero to do with the assessment values.
One day, you could pass a resolution asking the state to pass legislation to do that here in our county. And that's an option you may want to consider. So we're asking you to do the rollback rate. Now, it's interesting that you're looking to increase revenue from property taxes by $1.1 million. And that's a 21% hike in taxes and tax collections. And it's noteworthy that last year, your planned income to your general revenue was about $38 million or so. But it turned out you took in an extra $13 million, and your net increase in revenue above your budget, your over-budget on your collections, by $9.1 million. Well, I guess good for you. So you don't need another $1 million through a property tax hike this year. The exact numbers are you went budgeted 34.7, actual revenue, 48.1 million, net after spending in the general fund, extra $9.2 million. So now you want to have also a total increase of revenue to $217 million, above last year's rate of revenue of $179.00 million. That's just from your budget. So you're looking to take in an extra $37 million total revenue. It's coming from things like increased utility rates, which hurt people. You're going up 2% on utilities and certain utilities here. The people of this county need a break. And our Bartow Republican Party is here to ask you, on their behalf, to give the people a break. They can't afford a lot of things. Inflation is hurting them. Gas prices are higher, food prices are higher, housing prices are higher, inflation, I'm sorry, interest rates are going up. And yet you want to take more money from them that you really don't need because you took in an extra $9 million in revenue above your budget last year so it can just go into your fund to do what we're not quite sure. I'm sure there's a lot of things you'll do with it. But they need it more than you need it. We'd ask you also, on behalf of the party, to adopt a zero-based budgeting policy. Don't predict what you think you can spend more, how you can spend more next year based on what you predict will be the increased values. Instead, justify every dollar spending every year, starting from a $0 increase. So our Bartow Republican Party is asking you to do the right thing, to do the right thing for the citizens of this county, the city, and roll back the milage rate. Bartow County, you had that up there. There are 38% of taxes, I think, approximately. Commissioner Taylor rolled back the rate. They're doing a 6.9% increase in revenue based on that, with just rolling back the rate to a level that does not increase tax collections because values are higher. If you roll back the rate, you still take in more because there's new taxpayers and there's new people paying it. It's because of the new people in the town. But Dersville did it. You hardly even cut theirs down. Now, they're a tiny budget, but hey, they cut taxes. They went beyond the rollback rate to under it. So we're asking you, on behalf of the Bartow Republican Party, to do the right thing and adopt the rollback rate because you just don't need any more money than you got last year. Thank you.
Public hearing for the Cartersville M&amp;O continues. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, or make any comment, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the city of Cartersville M&amp;O milage rate and turn it over to council for consideration.
Do you want to add the item to?
I added the nine items at the beginning of the meeting, so we were set for the actual vote. It's been, thank you, sir, for your guidance on that.
As a word, we're talking about...
Is there any, if there's discussion or our motion is in order?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. We are moving item six of the agenda, just because I know there's people here that would like to speak, and we want to get them on with their evening. We're moving item six, which is the city school system M&amp;O milage rate that is set at 13.906. We're moving that to this next item for consideration. So that being the case, I will, I think our, the school board chair, Ms. Dial would like to make comment. Again, Ms. Dial, if you'll make your name and your address for our clerk for the records, please.
Mayor, before...
I'm opening up the public hearing.
Yeah. I just wanted to note for the record, it's a joint public hearing between us and the city school board.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, good evening. My name is Kelly Dial. I'm the president of the Cartersville City School Board. I live at 4 Mimosa Terrace in Ward 6. And we have a couple of slides. I'll get to those kind of at the end. But just to make a few comments, the Carroll City Schools are committed to providing the best public education for our children and young adults. We believe our system is an integral part of the marketing of this community to business and industry. And we feel like our economic development and the quality of our school system are linked. Our system is coming to the end of three major construction projects. The Linda Bittenstone Building, which we dedicated a few months ago at the high school, a major renovation at the elementary school, and as everybody's probably aware, a new primary school on the top of the hill at Carter Grove. We are thankful that our community has supported all those building projects, and they've done that by multiple times approving an East BLOSS that adds a penny of sales tax. Those BLOSS funds impart, allow us to pay off the bonds that built those buildings. So that is something that we are happy for, that we don't have to pay for that out of our tax money, our property tax money. But BLOSS funds don't pay for personnel. By law, they don't pay for personnel. So as with most large organizations, the majority, I think about 85% of our budget is personnel cost, indirect and direct. We get state dollars for that, but those are never enough. And more often than not, a lot of times, we're ordered to pay some indirect costs that they don't pay for at all. So as our community grows, what we've noticed over the years is, I guess, in my 23 years on the board, we have, we used to sort of look north on 75 when we compared ourselves to other systems. We don't do that anymore. When people look, we're looking south. We're being compared to the metro systems. Our base of potential employees is also looking at those systems as well, and we have to compete with them. One thing, good thing that I think came out of the pandemic is we learned just how essential teachers are and other school employees. And as we've come out of that, I think it has become a trend, particularly in the metro area, that they start acknowledging that more and more. And we will never be able to match the money some of the metro systems pay, but we do want to be competitive. We feel like we offer things to employees that the metro system schools don't, as far as our culture and living in this beautiful town. But with that said, our 2024 budget that was approved some months ago includes a 5.5% raise for all classified and certified employees. Also includes some additional step increases on the backend for some of the really experienced employees. There are some additional positions because of the new school. And also, we have moved from a model where we use the Ombudsman program for our alternative school and other things. We're moving that on campus in a new kind of situation that has caused some additional costs, but we also feel like will allow us to serve those students more, more efficiently and more effectively. So, and as I've heard the mayor tell us all before, we always have five mils that the state withholds from us to go into what they call equalization money that goes to other school systems. So that five mils, we never, is always taken from us.
I'm sorry. So I just want to, there's five mils of city of Cartersville school property tax that goes down to the state.
Technically, the state just deducts it from what they send to us. But yes, it is five mils, whatever the current value of a mil is. So when the value of a mil goes up, our fair share goes up. The current milage rate is 13.906. It has been that way for several years. This slide will show you kind of traditionally. In 1997, the current procedure for setting milage came into effect. 13.906 is the lowest that the milage had been since, in any time. In fact, in 2014, the milage was 18.23 during some of the rather hard times. A number of years, we did go back to the entire rollback rate. The last couple of years, we have stayed steady at 13.906. This year, after hearing comments and after meeting last week and looking at everything, we felt we could, while not going all the way back to the rollback rate, we felt that we could roll back some. And so I anticipate in a few minutes that we will vote to recommend to you that we roll the milage rate back to 13.5, which will be the lowest it has been since we've, the lowest it's been, period. And we also have another slide similar to yours that compares us to some other local systems that we are often compared with. And as you'll see, we are lower than everyone. The only one that seems close to us is Pope County. So, and I think if you look statewide, we would be probably in the, in the top 10 having the lowest milage rate. So we do, we appreciate the fact that we have a vibrant community and that the property tax, we understand that the appraisals have gone up, and we can't control that. But, and we always are mindful of keeping our milage as low as we can. We feel like this will allow us to strike a balance between rolling back a little bit and also being able to provide the best public education for our students.
Thank you. Public hearing contin- joint public hearing continues for the Cartersville City School System milage rate at 13.906 as it sets right now. And anybody wishing to make comment, may do so at this time.
My name is Mike Lusk. I'm living Ward 3, Carrie Ross Ward and Travis's Ward. That's 4 Twin Leaf Court. Thank you for allowing me to speak. As Ms. Dial just said, there are a lot of things about that number that when we talk about, we were talking about transparency a while ago. When we're talking about milage rates, let's not forget what drives the dollars beyond the milage rate. We've been a growing community. You guys have been seeing it for years. And we went back when we were like, you know, 15 milage rate. We had about a $1.5 million digest. We're well over $2 billion this year. So it's a multiplier. You know, I went to Cartersville, so I know my math. Trust me, if you multiply the 2.2 billion by the milage rate, it comes up to a higher number, as was pointed out early, which is a tax increase. We are getting more. I don't want to make this sound like a no-good deed goes unpunished. It's highly important to me that I recognize the board that in a short period of time that you guys got together, you recognize what you heard from folks that are up here talking, and you heard about it respectfully, hopefully, that we really do appeal to try to get some more rollback. We got to .406. Hopefully, you'll vote for that. All I can do is appeal for you to do more. Let me just give you a real quick snippet of what that dollar value is, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of the school. If you look at that .000406 that you just took off, doesn't sound like much. That's straight off the bottom line, $717,000. I got that. I appreciate it. Do you know that it would only take $1,000,036,000, or 1.0, 1,000,000.038 to totally wipe out all school taxes for senior citizens in Cartersville over 65, all of them? There's currently 124 of the 1,455, 65 and over property owners that are fully exempt thanks to the $60,000 exemption that we have. So they're fully, the 124 out of 1,455 are already getting a great break. This 717, had it been focused directly on that, and I understand about broad and low, I'm totally good for broad and low, but had that been focused, that would have been for seniors 65 and over, it would have wiped out half of the ones that we have. The 1,331 remaining would be down to about 700. So I'm saying these things, Mr. Mayor and council, respectfully, to let you know when we look at those dollars and where they came from, they came from growth. They came from whether it's assessments. That goes to the, assessments goes to the digest. It does. Growth goes to the digest. When you multiply that same milage rate to a higher number, you're higher taxes. So when we do things like when we're explaining to each other about how much money that really means and why, and I complain about it too, Mr. Mayor, that the state does certain things. But at the end of the day, this is our world. This is what we got to deal with. We, in my view, we owe it to the elderly citizens of Cartersville not to be left out of that model that Ms. Dial mentioned a while ago. That model of a school system is great. We're bringing folks in, and people really pay attention to schools. I know every time I moved with my kids, I paid attention to schools. But we have ingrained in this community a lot, 1,455. And think about, there's a whole lot more senior citizens than that. Those are the only ones that are eligible for a home state exemption. So when I talk about these numbers, there's a lot more elderly people. They're not going to get any kind of break. They're renting or whatever. So again, I respectfully appeal if there's any way that we can increase the rollback a bit more. Again, I didn't want to make it sound like a no-good deed goes unpunished. I appreciate y'all's help trying to get that, and I appreciate that you took action. I just appeal for you to do more. Thank you all.
Thank you. Public hearing continues for Cartersville School System milage rate set at 13.906 currently. And anybody else wishing to make comments?
Thank you very much, Dr. David McCalip. I'm not sure who to address, so I'm not trying to slide anyone here. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Bartow Republican Party. I serve there as their assistant treasurer. We're here to ask the Bartow School Board to adopt the milage rate. The Bartow Republican Party believes rolling back to the rollback rate is the right thing to do for our citizens, and we believe you can afford it. People are hurting. People are paying more. Their bank accounts are draining. And the school system is asking for far more than it should. And I do believe that if you went back to the rollback rate, you'd still get increased revenues because of the increased growth from new taxpayers, just like Steve Taylor did when he rolled back the rate and still has 6.9% more in the revenue stream from property taxes. Now, you're looking at increasing the taxes by, it was going to be 32%, but I guess with the new role, with the new rate that you're adopting at 13.5, you're suggesting they're going to take in now instead of 24.5 million, now you'd take in only 23.7 million beyond what you took in last year. It's not really accurate to call your cutting back to 13.5 a rolling back. A rolling back is going down to probably like 11 or something like that, I think is the number I saw. This is simply slightly cutting your proposed increase, but you're still looking to take in probably 31, 30% more in property tax revenue than you did last time. That's $23.7 million out of the economy. It's being redistributed from people's pockets and businesses to the school system, and that does have an economic impact. But it's still taking out of the economy and choosing who's going to have the money to spend. Now, the Republican Party here in Bartow County is concerned about the businesses that are hurting because we know when their property taxes go up 30%, they're going to have to pass those costs on to their consumers or they're going to have to take a cut, and maybe they won't survive. We're concerned about renters because definitely the renters will have those property taxes passed on to them. And a lot of people in rental situations are already struggling and can't afford to see those taxes passed on to their rent. We're worried about people who want to buy homes, who now are going to be priced out of the market. They might just be right there, and then they look, well, the tax bill on this will be here. Well, I guess we're not going to do it. And the really vicious part of this is it creates a new level of revenue that will want to be prolonged for years to come that, because I've never seen a government substantially cut its revenue on purpose. And then it hurts folks, you know, like the people who raised me, my single mother, who worked two jobs and are struggling to put food on the table for their kids and are struggling to get to work and get them to school when their property taxes go up. It hurts them a great deal, especially with all the inflation, increased utility bills from the city. So you should roll back. You know, why do you need an extra 24.5 million? I want to thank the school board, actually, for being much more responsive than the Bartow Board when I asked for the budget. Within two days, a PDF was sent to me, the budget. Thank you. Thank your staff for doing that. That was very gracious. I still have a lot of analysis to do, and I hope I'm getting this right. But according to this, the general fund spending would be $55.3 million. But your total spending would be 80-something million.[1681.34] And I know there's other things, there's capital, projects and the like. But I looked at the bottom line of the little postcard budget you put online. It increases your reserve funds by nine million dollars. So when you're thinking about approving this city, remember that people are draining their bank accounts. So the bank account of the school board goes up by nine million dollars. That doesn't seem right. So the people deserve this. Our Bartow Republican Party asks the Carlsville School Board to do the right thing and adopt the rollback rate and go back and do the hard budget work that citizens do every day when they're deciding how to pay their bills. Thank you very much.
Again, we're in the midst of a joint public hearing for the Carlsville School System Millage Rate at thirteen point nine oh six. Anybody else wishing to make comment may step forward at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this. And procedurally, the City of Carlsville, the council meeting is going to go into recess. And I'll call on the school board to call their meeting into order.
Need a motion to.
Oh, can I have a motion to go in to go into recess? All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
We are recessed.
And I will call this call waiting of the Carlsville City School Board to order. I'll note that all members are in attendance, other than Mr. Chason and Ms. Payne, that are both out of town. We have one item on our agenda that is to recommend the proposed millage rate to the City of Carlsville. Do I have a motion to that?
Make a motion to approve millage rate at thirteen point five.
That's second. Ready discussion on that? All right, if not, all member raise your hand. It is unanimous. And that being our only item of business, I will will consider ourselves adjourned.
Do I have a second, a motion to get us out of recess?
Yes, you do, sir.
I'll take a motion to take us out of recess.
Motion to come out of recess.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
We are unrecessed. And Chair will Chair will entertain a motion relative to the recommendation of the Carlsville City School System that is at thirteen point five zero, I believe was heard.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. The next item is the Carlsville Business Improvement District Millage Rate, which is set at zero point eight four six mils for two thousand and twenty-three. And I'll open up a public hearing relative to that mill rate. Anybody wishing to make comment on that may do so. And just if you're unfamiliar with the Business Improvement District, that is a voluntary tax that the downtown businesses put upon themselves for improvements to the downtown area and could also include signage and infrastructure and other such things. And seeing nobody wanting to step forward on that, I'll close the public hearing for the Carlsville Business Improvement District Millage Rate at point eight four six. And Chair will entertain a motion or any discussion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. And then lastly, a public hearing for the Geo Parks and Recreation Property Tax Millage Rate that is set at point four mils for this year. That, again, as I mentioned, I think earlier in the presentation, is this is year eight of a ten-year bond that voters approved.
Year nine, Mayor.
Year nine, excuse me, thank you, Dan. And so this millage rate is set just to cover the cost of paying off the bonds.
Yes, Mayor, and just as a reminder to the public, the citizens approved this almost like nine years ago. And Logan is reminding us basically what we spent that money on, try to make as efficient and effective use of that money. We've upgraded several things at Dillinger Park, the new administration building, new restrooms out there. We also added a restroom at Hicks Park and also at the sports complex. Number of things, like I said, we Goodyear Clubhouse got renovated, so we use that money very wisely, tacked on with the grant money we were able to get to use the taxpayers' money as wisely as possible. This is as the ninth year out of ten to pay this bond debt off.
And I would add to that, we also used a lot of city personnel to do some of the work instead of subcontracting out, subcontracting out, especially at the Atco Club, at the Goodyear Clubhouse, excuse me. So that being said, I'll open up a public hearing for those Geo Bonds for the Recreation Property Tax Millage at point four zero. Anybody wishing to step forward may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the Geo Parks and Recreation Property Tax Millage Rate at point four zero. And we'll turn it over to Council for discussion or consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously, thank you. Mr. Manino, you've got the next item, appointment to the Alcohol Control Board. And actually, before you start, Randy, everybody is welcome to stay. We got nothing to hide. We also know that some folks were here for certain issues, and if you would like to not be here, we won't be too offended. But you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to go and enjoy your evening, and we appreciate y'all's being here, so. All right, Mr. Manino, if you'll get us going with that Alcohol Control Board appointment, please, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Our Ward Five appointee, Matt Terry, to the Alcohol Control Board, his term expires September fifth. He's willing to continue to serve if reappointed. And with that, staff does recommend his approval. He's been a very active, good member of that that board.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
My phone now, that's one of my appointees, said he's very active, doing a good job.
That's, he is doing an excellent job.
It is a subjective.
I think he's a Florida State fan, Matt, that's why.
Yeah, maybe that's why, maybe so.
That could be.
So I do have a motion, do I have a second? I've got a second here, all in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, who made that motion, by the way?
Yep.
Got you. Next is we have an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and Council. Becky Carr and Lady Gregory, both their terms are expiring, and they are both willing to continue to serve if reappointed. And like Matt Terry, they've been long-term members of the Historic Preservation Commission. They've been through a lot of hearings, and we do recommend retaining those members as as board members.
Any questions or discussion on this item? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. We have the first reading of AZ twenty-three dash zero two, Mr. Manino.
Thank you again. This is approximately a hundred and fifty-eight acres, several tracts owned by the City of Carlsville. A few of those tracts were in the City of Emerson. The city has gone through the process to have those de-annexed. The other parcels are in the county jurisdiction. With that, the city is seeking to have them all in the City of Carlsville's jurisdiction. With that, we would recommend annexing and rezoning it to the public institutional zoning category. All are in the area of the water treatment plant and the firing range that will be on the agenda later in the meeting. Keith had pointed out during the work session, there is a fifty-foot strip that was included in all the original material that was submitted to you. That will be removed. It's shown in orange on on the display on the board there. The reason for that is that does retain and keep the property that's in the orange that's below it from being landlocked or surrounded by city-owned property, or keeps us from creating a donut hole there. The survey data from that, Keith said, should be in by the next meeting, and we'll have that display, have that for you for display. With that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this annexation and rezoning to the public institutional zoning category.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of AZ twenty-three dash zero two and ask anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the zoning portion public hearing and open up the annexation public hearing for AZ twenty-three dash zero two and ask anybody who wishes to speak on this topic to step forward. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the annexation portion of request AZ twenty-three dash zero two. And again, this is a first reading, we will take this up, we're a second reading in public hearing, final consideration at our.
September seventh.
September second meeting.
Seventh.
Seventh, I knew that. Mr. Porter, you have the next item.
Yes, the Carlsville Rome Court, Carlsville Development Corridor. The MPO has asked us to sign on this resolution to basically, which will help them as they apply for federal funding to help to get this project moved forward. It's been talked about for a little while, but is recommended for your approval to this resolution to for the Rome Carlsville Development Corridor.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Morgan, you've got the next handful here. We'll start with the Pension Plan Resolution and Amendments.
Yes, sir, we're requesting approval of the resolution and amendments for the pension plan as we move forward with GMEBS. This is another step in that process, and we're asking for council approval for that tonight.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Morgan on this? And if there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Fred.
Yes, sir, we're requesting approval for surplus vehicles and assets from departments, and we're asking approval from council to sell those on GovDills.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yes, sir, these are the subcontracts for Reeves Young. They're the builder or the construction manager at risk for our property out there, the water department facility that we're building. We we require them to bring those contracts to us, so we see all of their subs and we vet what they have, and we're bringing that for approval tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Settlement Agreement, fifty-three Goodyear Avenue.
Yes, sir, this is a tenant and a property owner that were sustained water damage after UMS, our water contractor. Actually, we don't think they flushed the lines properly, but their insurer took care of this customer, took care of the property owner, and also we're asking for this reimbursement piece with the city. We've spoken with Keith on it, we required them to have all of that settled before we signed off on the last piece of that. And we're asking for council approval to accept that last portion.
Thank you. Questions on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a, to be able to sign a memorandum of understanding with Johnson Controls. They do energy assessments, and any of those assessments that they provide are free of charge. We bring those items back if there's a savings to you all to to gain approval for that. We're asking for approval to move to enter into this MOU.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Fire range facility, Architecture and Engineering Services.
Yes, sir, we're we're asking them to enter in an agreement with CPL to provide Architectural Engineering Services. This is one of those pieces that Randy mentioned that we're, that was in the county or in the part of Emerson. We're asking to annex that in, but we're trying to move forward with getting them a a nice fire range facility to also get them up to speed, but also what Dan mentioned, utilizing with the county for this time period. We're asking for approval to enter into that agreement.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Freddie.
All right, thank you all.
Mr. Porter, you've got.
Uh, Mayor, Freddie. While Mr. Morgan's up, one of the additional added items was his.
Thank you for that.
So I thought it might be easy for him to take care of it now.
Good man.
Sure, why not?
Keith, I take back everything, man.
It'll all start again tomorrow.
Requesting approval to move forward with a survey for the three twenty South Irwin Street property is our electric department. As we move forward with the architects, they request, we could not find a survey. We're requesting to do a survey, a topographical survey with them. We're asking your approval to move forward with MD Patrick Engineering at a cost of forty-two hundred dollars, and they can turn that around in ten days. They were the lowest as far as cost and in the best timeframe.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank Dan too, or thank Keith too, right, most of all? Dan, you've got the next handful, please.
Yes, Mayor, I'll just start off, and those next three, Keith's going to go in more detail, but the amendments.
Actually, it's the first one's the Edgewood Bush.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
It's okay.
Edgewood Bush School, Contract Performance Services. We've done this in the past. We've got basically a contract, it kind of spells out the requirements, eight thousand dollar contribution for using towards the product development funds, and I recommend this for your approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Well, put this thing on autopilot, let's go.
The next three, but I'll start off with the second reading, the ordinances, amendment and restatement, the sixty-seven plan, the two thousand seventeen retirement plan. GMEBS is the IT department, needs a little more time. My recommendation is going to be to approve these ordinances with some changes that Keith will talk about, effective date on November second of two thousand twenty-three. And the amendment to the retirement plan ordinances, some changes in language there, but I'll let Keith explain a couple of things you need to have addressed.
The first one is on item eighteen, the nineteen sixty-seven plan. On page two thirteen of the addenda, section two, needs to be revised to say the effective date will be November second, two thousand twenty-three. On page two fifty-five of, in the agenda for item eighteen, section three needs to be revised to state that the effective date will be November second, two thousand twenty-three. These are both recommended by staff, and I would recommend y'all approve this item as amended.
Thank you.
Do we do both in one motion?
Yeah, both of those, item eighteen, yes.
Excuse me, we're on item eighteen right now. Those amendments, we're on item eighteen.
Yeah.
So we're handling item eighteen right now. Anything approved would need to be as amended.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And item nineteen deals with the two thousand seventeen retirement plan. I will request the ordinances in the agenda be amended that on page two eighty-three, section two, be revised to November second, two thousand twenty-three, and on page three twenty-five, section three, be revised to say an effective date of November second, two thousand twenty-three. Recommend that they be approved as amended from staff.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item twenty has about five different ordinances that are being amended through the pension ordinances related to the city. Four of them are not affected by this change. However, the first ordinance, which is on page three forty-eight and three forty-nine of the agenda package, needs to be amended by adding a new section two, which states that its effective date will be November second, two thousand twenty-three, and that the current section two, which is just adoption language, needs to be revised to section three. And it's recommended y'all approve that as amended.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And Mayor, items twenty-one and twenty-two are standard deed of dedication agreements and maintenance agreements that are recommended by staff for your approval.
Could perhaps those motions be lumped into carry both items?
That was my hope.
If someone is so inclined, now might be the time to do that.
Motion to approve the dedication and maintenance agreements on both Satterfield Common Townhouses and the Bend Pettit Creek Townhouses.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hampton, you are up.
Trying to keep my stuff in order this time. Thank you, Mayor and Council. First item up is the annual electric system tree trimming contract. This is, of course, something you guys have to approve every year to contract the last one year with Trees Unlimited. As you guys may remember, Electric Cities of Georgia, as a part of the aggregated services that we enlist, they bid this out on a state level, get the cost down and everything, and they provide this as a service. So we we are using their load bidder, which is also pretty locals in K Springs, so we like to use them, they can get here quick. This is a budgeted item not to exceed a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, and we do request your approval of the contract with Trees Unlimited.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Hampton on this? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue, sir.
Yes, sir, next item was a five hundred KVA two eight volt transformer purchase. We needed to purchase one of these for stock because we currently do not have one. We received five bids and are requesting to purchase a transformer from Solomon Transformer, which we we think is the best bid because of delivery time and is a very small price increase to get it in that time, and we need it badly. This is a budget expense as part of our capital transformer budget.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, sir, this next item is the same size transformer, but it's a four eighty volt, we need two of those. We actually had one that got struck by lightning. We had just installed over at the GMC dealership, it was in there about three weeks and lightning hit it. So now we need two. So one's for stock and one's for a customer that's waiting on it. We received six bids and requesting a bid from UTB Transformers based on the lowest price and also a very good delivery time, approximately a month. And this, again, is a budgeted expense.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one.
All right, last one was a thousand KVA four eighty volt transformer. This is also one we need for stock. We received three bids and considered the best bid was from TNI due to basically low price and also the best delivery time. Again, this is a budgeted expense, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars, and we do request your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Mr. Forsyth, you're up.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, the first item is a programmable logic controller, a PLC replacement for all of our water storage tanks. This is the computer that talks back to the SCADA system at the water treatment plant in order to determine how we operate that plant based on tank levels. They are obsolete, they're over 20 years old. One of them is currently out and we can't get spare parts. So we're asking to replace all of those plus one spare and our SCADA contractor, MR Systems, has offered a surprise of $10,937 and it's a turnkey project that's installed and programmed. Recommended for your approval as a budgeted maintenance item.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, sir. This land permitting technical assistance has to do with our biosolids land application permit in process. We have, the city owns property for this in Taylorville area. We have only permitted 200 acres of the approximately 500 acre tract. We need to get the rest of it permitted as much as possible in order to land apply biosolids there, as well as some of the private farmland. The farmers who own that land are no longer desiring us to apply land, apply biosolids on their land for various reasons, which we can understand. But anyway, we need to get some property in the bank, if you'll have it, to be able to land apply these solids. Cinegro has helped us with this permitting processes before. They have a lot of experience getting this done. We're recommending their proposal for your approval for $17,095 for this technical assistance to get this permitted.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, sir. My final item is engineering services for the design and construction of replacement of approximately 3,800 feet of galvanized water mains. This is in the Mimosa Chestnut Birch Way area, small subdivision near Gentilly Drive or But anyway, what I'm asking is, first of all, to approve the renewed engineering services agreement with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood as the current one has expired, as well as the proposal from Goodwin Mills and Kaywood to design and construct, or I'm sorry, manage the construction of this project for $90,850. It is a budgeted capital item.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sidney. Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. First item, we have, Public Works has received a change order request from Southland Engineering to complete a right-of-way estimate for the Douthat Ferry winding project. These estimates are required each year. The service proposal will be subcontracted through THC, who is pre-qualified with GDOT to do the right-of-way work. The proposed, proposal from Southland Engineering is for $6,445.26. This will be a SPOS item. We recommend approval of this item in order to keep the Douthat Ferry Road project moving forward and this will be for, for two years.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to the three, the final three added items that have not been addressed and turn over to Mr. Lovell.
Aye.
You're going to do the asbestos in the MEAG?
Yeah, I guess I could do that. Sorry, Wade. Better do that.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
The next item we have is, we have, we purchased the property at 115 Woodland Drive in order to build a detention pond. That's part of the Terrell Heights Drainage Project, which is, which is an ARPA project, which, just to remind you, is American Rescue Plan Act. We're using those funds on that project. We did find that there was asbestos in the building. We are going to remove the building, so we do have to get abatement done. We did get three prices. The lowest price was with A&amp;M Contracting for $18,000. We recommend the selection of A&amp;M Contracting to perform this asbestos removal. And in order to utilize these ARPA funds, the proposed work will be part of the Terrell Heights Drainage Project and will be paid out of these ARPA funds. To qualify for these funds, our staff feels that this project would help Stormwater Division manage, reduce, and recapture drainage resulting in reducing flooding at this location. And thanks to Keith for making me say that every time.
And just to note, that does have to be put verbatim in the minutes.
All right. I'll have to.
We recommend, we recommend approval of this.
Isn't there something else you got to read?
That's it.
That was it.
That was it.
That was it. Okay.
It is in the item summary, Julie.
Perfect.
Chair, want to attend a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, we'll move on to the final three added items before we get to Tom's show. This will be the Recreation Department Resolution.
Yes, Mayor. We've been asked, along with the county, to approve a resolution authorizing a master on demand service agreement with pre-qualified architectural and engineering firms to provide design services for future parks and recreations for grant-related projects. In other words, this will allow the grant writers to, when a grant comes available, they can immediately contact one of these companies that are pre-approved, have them include the design with the grant, which gives us a much greater likelihood of being issued the grant. The companies involved are TSW, Forsyth Group, Croix Engineering Group, CPL, and American Engineers, Inc. And it is recommended by, by staff for your approval.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Will this, perchance, allow us possibly to finish the path system?
It could be used for, for those types of grants, yes. Now, whether it will, will be used, I can't tell you, but this is something that could be used.
Just like to be on record. I really would like to see that happen.
Wade and Lovell, we are working.
Some of those grants might be used for the new facility off of Tennessee Street.
That could very well be true, too.
Could have a trail that goes to that.
I'll defer to, I'll defer to Steve on that, though he probably doesn't want to promise anything tonight.
We're both on record.
That's great. Chair, want to attend a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, we've got two items that are of rather substantial importance.
Yes, they are. The next two items, the first is a memorandum of understanding with Hanwha Q Sales, Georgia, Inc. They are a company that is buying 374 acres at the Island 75 Park. They will be installing, under their umbrella, two different manufacturing facilities there and they will have the right to issue bonds up to 2.9 billion, with a B, in case my accent messed that up, dollars, and they will be bringing 2,165 new jobs to the community at a minimum. This is recommended by the Joint Development Authority for your approval. They approved it at their meeting on Tuesday. It will be considered by the County Commissioner at its, at its meeting on next Wednesday, I believe. Melinda Lemon is available if you have any questions about the specifics related to the project. I went into a lot more detail in the work session. If any of y'all want me to go into that same detail here, I'm happy to, but staff is recommending your approval.
Chair, want to attend a motion or any discussion if there's further details that need to be shared?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And you're the final item, Keith.
Yeah. Associated with the memorandum of understanding y'all just approved is, we are requiring a guarantee agreement from the company to be issued with respect to the obligations that are contained in the MOU. This is being required by the authority. They just felt with a project that is this large and this substantial and the impacts on the community, that before we went down this road, we wanted a little more strength to it than just the MOU. And it is recommended by staff for your approval and is on the same approval schedule by the other jurisdictions as, as in the other item.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Was that showing up?
Now, the ever patient, Tom Reinhardt.
I'm the Mayor and Council. The first item I have tonight is the Mullinian Jenkins 2022 MEAG invoice. This is an invoice for Mullinian Jenkins for the annual MEAG questionnaire completion. The finance staff usually, well, not usually, but every year it's done, completed by the finance staff and then reviewed and made correction by Mullinian Jenkins. The budget, this is the budgeted item. The invoice is $7,748 and I recommend your approval for payment.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The finance report, Tom.
Best part of the night.
Late bedwet, right?
Okay. I'm the Mayor and Council. We'll be looking at the June 2023 financials report and comparing to June 2022. I would like to keep, remind you that this is on a cash basis, meaning that if the year enclosed process is completed, there will be changes made to these financial statements, changes such as depreciation expense, bond accruals, accrued revenues, fixed assets. That will bring us back into the modified accrual method of accounting. In the general fund, revenues increased over the last year by 8.6 million dollars. Expenses increased by 2.3 million dollars. And the two areas of revenue in the general fund I look at, our local office and sales tax, have an increase there over last year by about 1.9 million dollars. Billing permits and inspection fees have an increase there of about $965,000. And water and sewer revenue, revenues increased over the last year by 5.3 million dollars. Expenses increased by 3 million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues increased over the last year by 6.1 million dollars. Expenses increased by 3.3 million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase gas, increased capital expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the electric fund, revenues increased over the last year by 2.6 million dollars. Expenses increased by 4 million dollars due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchasing electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased over the last year by $54,000. Expenses increased by $31,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over the last year by $488,000, $480,000. While expenses increased $384,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over the last year by $1 million. Expenses increased by $42,000.